...with them at 6 o'clock in an adjacent room here. And we know that some of you have been here for some time, but the schools were notified earlier today that our meeting was going to be at 7:00. But we appreciate all of you being here tonight. And at this time, I'd like to recognize the board members we have with us. The chairman of Caldwell County Commissioners, and that's Mr. Jeff Branch.
In the back.
In the back. And the vice chairman, Mr. Chris Barlow. And to his right, Mr. Randy Church and Mr. Mike LaBrosse. So let's give them a hand. And we know that you may have other commitments or other things you want to do, so at any time, you know, feel free to leave. We'd also like to recognize another guest with us tonight, Dr. Garrett Henshaw. He is the president of the Catawba Valley Community College. Dr. Henshaw, back here in the corner. Thank you very much. We are now down to nine days of school left. And middle college is having their graduation this Thursday, and the early college is having their graduation on Friday. And the three traditional high schools will be graduating on the 24th, a week from this Friday. The next two weeks are critical. As we know, we have been and will be in testing, and so it's imperative that our students get plenty of rest and be as prepared as possible for the test. But we're glad that you are here with us this evening. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Trish Johnson, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources, who will give our invocation.
Thank you. If you'll bow your heads and please pray with me. Dear wise and loving Father, we pause now at the end of this day to acknowledge who you are and how very important you are in our lives. It is a pleasure to take this opportunity to publicly thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening, our Board of Education members, students, parents, teachers, and administrators. We would like to thank you for the many blessings, both seen and unseen, that we have enjoyed this day. Thank you for life and for the measure of health that we enjoy, and especially for friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work and for the honor of bearing this awesome responsibility of educating our future. I thank you for loving us and for giving us your bound-- for giving to us grace with your boundless mercy. And now I pray for the agenda set before us tonight. Please give guidance and direction to our leaders as they make decisions on behalf of the students, families, and the educators that we serve. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next, we will have our pledge of allegiance. We have two students tonight from West Caldwell. We have David Williams. He is a senior at West Caldwell and has been accepted to Virginia Tech. He is the son of David and Brandy Williams, and he is the commanding officer of the West Caldwell Naval JROTC. Also, we have Brienne Terrell. She is a junior at West Caldwell High School, the daughter of Leslie Sullivan. Brienne is active in Beta Club, Mu Alpha Theta, and the Key Club. She was recently elected Lieutenant Governor for the Carolina Key Club. So we will have those two come forward and do our pledge of allegiance. If you'll stand, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, David, Brienne. Good luck in all your future endeavors. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of the agenda, which has been available to the board for several days here. You've had an opportunity to look it over. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the approval of the minutes. We had a regular session as well as a closed session, so we have two sets of minutes from the April 8th, 2013 regular board meeting date. Do I hear a motion that we approve these minutes?
I move that we approve both the regular board meeting and the closed session minutes from April the 8th. I second the motion.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have our honors and recognition. Now, we know that a lot of people come out for this, and we also realize that a lot of students are here and need to get home. And so as soon as this is over with, if you need to leave, then we understand. If you would like to stay for the duration of the meeting, you are certainly welcome to do that. We're going to move down front and welcome each of these people as they come forward, as they are announced. And I'm going to call on Mrs. Libby Brown, Community Relations Director here for Caldwell County Schools, to lead us through this portion of our agenda.
Thank you Chairman Pennell and the Board of Education and Dr. Stone. Congratulations to the following students who have been selected for the Education Center Art Gallery. We've enjoyed the beautiful display of color and talent throughout the main hallway of the Education Center. This artwork will be on display from now until the end of August. So your artwork is on display for the entire summer. As I call your name, please come forward for your certificate of recognition from the Board of Education, a handshake, and a pat on the back.
And a picture.
And a picture, yes. We'll start with Gamel Elementary School. Charmin Frisell is principal, Susan Sharp art teacher. We have Zachary Combs, Abigail Minton. Okay, is that Abigail's? And we have Mason Reed. Should we clap after every school? I think they just--
Yep.
Yeah. From Granite Falls Elementary School, we have Andrew Miller, principal, Amelia Hefner, art teacher. And the students whose artwork is on display are Nolan Keller and Ashley Okoa. Nolan is here. For Hudson Elementary, we have Andy Poole, principal, Will Baker, art teacher. We have Michael Hawkins, Yasenia Della Sanchez, and Erica Sutton. Okay, we're going to take a break and let moms and dads come and take pictures.
If you want to move to the center aisle, we will stay up there and smile until you finish snapping your cameras. So as soon as we get everybody here in the middle, you guys got to keep smiling. Take the last camera class, okay? All right, come on back over here. All right. All right, keep smiling. There's a lot of cameras out there. Is that it?
Okay, with Lord Creek Elementary, Leanne Frye is the principal, and Stephanie Woody Grishell is the art teacher. We have Avon Dula, Millie Hansen, and Austin Moore. From Whittnall Elementary, we have Andy Berry, principal, David Hefner, art teacher. And we have two students whose artwork is on display, Garrison Laws and Isaac Robbins. So if they're here tonight, are they here, Andy? And for the final school, we have a middle school, Gamel Middle School. Chris Green is principal, but I think Laura Austin is here tonight representing Gamel Middle School. We have Janet Roman, art teacher. And we have two students, Rachel Hart and Kyle Huddleston. So if we could have those two students come forward, please. Photo op.
Come on back over here, Max. A little bit on this. One of you can run right to here. That will be good.
All right, Dave. That's perfect.
Anastasia Shell, I know Anastasia's here tonight, second place, keyboarding two. Thought she was here. Maybe she isn't. And parents, this is EOG week, so if you need to leave, that's perfectly okay at this Bailey Shows, third place, keyboarding one. time because this is EOG week for our elementary students. And Jasmine Davidson, third place, business concepts. Now, we're going to turn our attention to middle school and high school. The Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA Leadership Conference, was held in Greensboro The FBLA advisors are Dawn Smith, Stacy Shell, and Sherri Bowman. And Bill Schreiber is principal. We also had a middle school student from Gamel Middle School who placed in the top three at the FBLA Leadership Conference. And Caldwell County students topped the competition. That is Crystal Martinat. Of the Caldwell County students from South Caldwell High School, Granite Falls Middle She was second place in career exploration. School, Gamel Middle School, and West Caldwell High School attended, 14 students placed in So there is Crystal. So let's give these students-- the top 10, and most received one or more certificates for proficiency in digital literacy,
Y'all slide down a little bit.
Microsoft Office 10, and/or personal finance recognition. Granite Falls Middle students who placed in the top three, we would like to recognize tonight.
Skills USA is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry working together to
We're going to start with Garrison Henshaw, who was first place, career exploration.
ensure this country has a skilled and prepared workforce. This program helps students excel and experience the world of work through the resources and perspective of secondary public education. Caldwell County students were prepared for competition at the Skills USA event held at the state level, where students champion their specialty areas. Most students who placed first are invited to compete at the national level in Kansas City, Missouri this summer. So congratulations. This is always a treat this time of year to recognize our first, second, and third-place finishers in Skills USA. So as I call your name, please come forward for your certificate. Starting with South Caldwell High School, Mike Picas, principal. Automotive skills showcase, first place, Caleb Watson. Automotive service tech, second place, Brandon Nelson. Josh Sattlemeyer is the automotive teacher. So Josh, come on up. I know you're here. Masonry one, second place, Thomas Bean. Masonry one, third place, Austin Clark. And we can't let Josh's brother sit in the audience. So Scott Sattlemeyer is the masonry teacher at South Caldwell High School. What a pair. Let's take a picture. This is South Caldwell. Okay, for West Caldwell High School, Jeff Link is principal. We had second place in plumbing, Austin Green. And Mike Swanson is the plumbing teacher at West Caldwell High School. I don't think Mike's here. Okay. And we have Dalton Crump, who is the state treasurer for Skills USA. Congratulations, Dalton. And we'll also spotlight those Career Center middle college students who placed for second and third. Starting with first place, engineering, Matt Coffey, Andy Myhut, and Zach Houston. First place, I think they're headed to Kansas City, is that right? They are? Okay, thanks, Frida. And all three guys are freshmen, so we have them for another three years. First place, electrical, Zach Blevins. And we have second place robotics team, Nate Bowman and Tyler Work. Of course, the advisor for all three of these first-place finishes and second place is none other than Frida Parker. And Frida Parker is the engineering teacher at CCC MC. Who is--
Zach.
Okay, and Zach is going to Nationals, yes. First place. Good job, Zach.
We need two rows since we got a tall float.
Okay, and we have one more team.
Let's do the pictures and then--
Okay.
All right. While the pictures are being taken, we want to congratulate you fellows going to Kansas City and wish you well. Come back to the gold or-- Won't they come back to the gold?
Gold, yes, gold.
All right. One more, one more.
Third-place finish, promotional bulletin board, Jackie Henry, Sarah Malakot, and Kristen Beach. And they were waiting patiently, so thank you.
I don't think so.
Congratulations to Caldwell County School employees, and we do have some seats now if you'd like to sit down. Who have completed a master or doctorate degree in 2012, 2013 during the school year. They've worked very hard, they deserve this recognition. So as I call your name, please come forward for your certificate. Jessie Bean from West Caldwell High School earned a master's in secondary mathematics from the University of Phoenix. I don't think Jessie is here tonight. Jeff, would you like to come up? Robin Clark from Davenport Elementary earned a master's in reading education from Appalachian State University. Congratulations, Robin. I don't know, Julia's here. Did you guys make all your teachers stay late? Carrie Curtis from Caldwell Early College High School earned a master's in secondary social studies from the University of North Carolina. Laura Dixon from Wesley Norah Elementary earned a master's in special education, learning disabled, from ASU Appalachian State University. Dece Gant from Dudley Shoals Elementary earned a master's in elementary education from Appalachian State University. We have just overworked our teachers, haven't we?
Mike down there, nine days, nervous.
Okay, Katie Green from Lord Creek Elementary School earned a master's in media coordinator from Appalachian State University. Okay. I know, this person is here. I've seen her. We're going to give you a standing ovation. Deborah Hadley from West Caldwell High School earned a master's in reading from Appalachian State University. I know this person's here. Jamie Engel from the Education Center earned a master's in school administration from Gardner Amy Carol Jennings from William Lenore Middle School earned a master's in middle grades science education from Appalachian State University. She's here? Kayla Nicole Jolly from William Lenore Middle earned a master's in middle grades mathematics from Appalachian State University. Michelle Moffett from Gamel Elementary Horizon School earned a master's in reading education from Appalachian State University. Chrissy Danielle Curly from Hudson Elementary School earned a master's in instructional technology specialist from Appalachian State University. Craig Styron from Collinsville School earned a master's in school administration from Gardner Linda K. Swanson from Hudson Elementary School earned a master's in elementary education from Appalachian State University. And Heather Trivet from Davenport A-plus School earned a master's in instructional technology specialist from Appalachian State University. So we'll do our masters now, and then we'll get to our two doctorates. Okay, so Josh, if you'd like to-- Let's give them all a round of applause for completing their degrees. We have two administrators, actually, in the school district who have completed their doctorate degree. Very special occasion in their life. Dr. Michael Wyatt from South Caldwell High School earned a doctorate in school administration superintendent from Appalachian State University on August 3rd, 2012. And Dr. Wyatt is the assistant principal at South Caldwell High School. Dr. Reba Yarborough from the Education Center earned a doctorate in school administration superintendent from Appalachian State University on December 16th, 2012. Dr. Yarborough is the AIG director for the Caldwell County Schools. So I know you're very proud of both of them. And it's always a special occasion at the end of the year to select outstanding employees. And congratulations to these who will be called up as employees who have been selected by their peers and their coworkers for their professionalism and for their outstanding performances in public education. So as I call your name, if you'll please come forward, you get the spotlight all over again. Assistant Principal of the Year, Adrian Dula, Gamel Elementary. Associate of the Year, Estella Kohler, Gamel Middle School. Bus Driver of the Year, Barry Lippford, South Caldwell High School. They're having a good time. Instructional Support Employee of the Year, Kim Roberts. And Kim Roberts is at Lord Creek Elementary and High Brighton High School. So we'll take a little photo break, let you all get in there with the board members. Principal of the Year is Julia Knight, Davenport A-plus School. Rookie Teacher of the Year, Stephanie Keller, Granite Falls Middle School. I feel like I should be doing this in French. Teacher of the Year, Terry Reed. He's William Lenore Middle School. And I think Lisa, is Lisa still here? And Terry is across the street in a concert, a band concert. They're having band chorus concert tonight, so he couldn't be here. And then our Volunteer of the Year, Jenny Hamby from Happy Valley School. What a great group we have before us tonight, all of our honors. If you'll get around front, we'll get a photograph of you. All of our honors, if you'll get around front, we'll get a photograph of you. Congratulations.
Indeed, we have a lot to be proud of in Caldwell County. We have a lot of wonderful students and employees. We're so blessed here. Next is the public comment, and we do not have any public comment tonight. Next item on the agenda is Dr. Steve Stone, our superintendent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of our audience who are left. We want to thank you for being here tonight. I have no board information, but I do have several action items, and I'd like for you to look at 11B, the proposed revisions to the Board Policy Manual. This is the 8,000 series. It has been out, which is financial management. It has been out for one month comment period. We have received no comment, so I would like to recommend to the board that we approve the 8,000 series to the Board Policy Manual.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the 8,000 series fiscal management since it's been on the table for a month? Do I hear a motion to that we approve it?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 8,000 series fiscal management.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, moving to item two. We do have a couple of Board Policy Series that I'd like to do these separately if you don't mind. The 6,000 series, which is support services, we have reviewed that. You do have in your packet under Exhibit 3, the comments from the School Boards Association Attorney. We've incorporated many of those items and would like to put the 6,000 series, which is student support services, out for a one-month comment period.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we put 6,000 series support services on the table for a one-month comment period?
I move that we place 6,000 series support services on a one-month comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item B is the 9,000 series, and that is facilities. And we have reviewed those. We've made some suggestions from the School Boards Attorney, and would like to place those out for a one-month comment period. The 9,000 series, which is facilities.
Do I hear a motion that we approve 9,000 series facilities for a 30-day comment period?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 9,000 series facilities for a 30-day comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have Board Policy 3621. We have already completed the 3,000 series. This was a policy that was missing. So in order to make the 3,000 complete, we would like to put 3621 student athletic eligibility out for a one-month comment period.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we put Policy 3621 student athletic eligibility out for a 30-day comment period?
I move we put Policy 3621 student athletic eligibility on a 30-day.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. My very last one tonight is Policy 7271, and that is for courier services, delivery and mail, for deliveries and mail. Again, we'd like to, that was one that was not in the 7,000 series that you've already approved, that we saw that was missing. So we would like to put that out for a one-month comment period.
Do I hear a motion that we approve Policy 7271 courier services, deliveries and mail for a one-month comment period?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we place Policy 7271 courier services, delivers and mail on a one-month comment period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before I give up the mic, I do want, for those in the audience or who may be watching this through streaming, we will have on our website all of these policies, and we would like very much for the public to look at those. And if there are some concerns or some issues that you want to bring forth, they are on the Caldwell County Schools website, and we do certainly invite the public to look at that and to forward any information to us, so we can consider it at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Next on the agenda is our Associate Superintendent for Human Resource Services, Dr. Trish Johnson.
Members of the board, Dr. Stone, Mr. Chair, have several items for your attention this evening, starting with Exhibit 4. Exhibit 4 is for information, but is pursuant to General Statute 115(c)-325(c)(1)(2a), which requires notification to the Board of Education, all teachers eligible to receive career status 30 days prior to the board's vote. You have received that information, and it's provided to you for information only. The next exhibit, Exhibit 5, is information for the board, just usual and customary information for your information only, requires no board action. Exhibit 6 includes usual and customary personnel items that requires action. I respectfully recommend approval of these items as they have been presented to you.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the usual and customary personnel matters as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the usual and customary personnel items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to Exhibit 7, student transfers. Since your last board meeting, we had 11 requests for student transfers. All 11 requests meet your board established criteria. I respectfully recommend approval of the 11 transfers as requested. And again, I have to keep reminded that these are students who are already currently attending and probably moved out of the district, but according to policy, they're permitted to remain on transfer. I respectfully recommend approval of the 11. If approved tonight, that brings the total transfers for the 2012-13 school year to 608.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the 2012-2013 student transfers as presented?
I move that we approve the 11 transfers for the month of May 2013 as presented.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Associate Superintendent for Educational Program Services, Dr. Carol Burns.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, my purpose is to present the local plan for career and technical education. I don't want to thank Kathy Jo Eckert sitting back there. This is the result of her work with her teachers and her staff, and I just present their good work and stuff. Well, she's going to see if I've really studied this, and I have done so, Kathy Jo, so we'll see. This plan is submitted each year. We have to do this, is required by the Carl D. Perkins Act, in order to get the money that we need to operate this program. We're very proud of the eight indicators. These are what we call academic indicators, which became part of the technical plan a few years ago. And if you look at those, I want to point out several of them to you. We have several areas that we certainly need to improve, and you looked at that and did the very same thing I did, started doing some addition and subtraction. But we're proud that they at least put this in here, because this makes the CTE program responsible for the academics, too. And this follows our concentrators, and those are the students who have four units of credit in CTE, and they're in a pathway, and they have one advanced, at least an advanced course. Of course, reading is that first one. And we're doing better, but we're almost there. 3.6 is where we need to move that one up, and it certainly will, I can assure you of that. The next one's mathematics, and you see we've done extremely well there. The next section in their vocats, that is their technical testing, we've done well there. The CTE students in secondary education who graduated, and that is one area we're proud of also. Those who are called, who graduated with their cohort is the next one. And here's another one with those minuses, and I don't even have to explain to you why that's there. That's our students who left, who graduated, and they are not in post-secondary education or advanced training or military service or employment. And that describes the Caldwell County economic situation to you at that point. You knew what that one was. Next area is non-traditional participation, and then the non-traditional completion. This would be boys and girls, men and women, and minorities, people who are not generally in those particular areas. It might be young man in culinary, or a young lady doing masonry, or one of the areas you wouldn't expect them to be in, and they are successful there. The next area does have the school profiles, and that's done in months. And I wanted to point out to you that this program operates in all the K-8 schools, all the middle schools, and the high schools, with exception of early college. Going on through the report, a very important thing for you to sort of remember, and we like for you to keep this number in mind, is that the Career and Technical Education Program offers 65 high school courses to students. They have a wide variety of courses to take in, 12 federal career clusters. They may also go on to the community college, where they have 17 college and career and college-promised technical certificates they can earn. So it's wide open for them, if they would like to really take these extra courses. I wanted to point out several priorities, because you saw one of them tonight. One of the things, and most of this has come about through, also, we did an audit of the CTE program last year. We do one or two every year, and it's one of the programs that we audited, and we're following that audit very closely, and doing many of the things recommended there. And one of those is the number two here, new marketing strategies to promote CTE, CTE completers, and the importance of industry credentials, and that certainly came out in our audit report. We're working on training and mentorships for teachers and students. And go down to number six, greater emphasis in entrepreneurship. That came through very loud and clear, and we feel like that's an important area, and you'll see some of that. It's woven into a number of things in the county, including the community and schools programs. So the things that you see here are woven together in different parts of the curriculum. Be implementing a new firefighter academy at Highbryton, and electrical trades at South Caldwell High School will be new this year. We have greater emphasis on the student organizations, and you saw results, some of that tonight. We're proud of those. And our continued involvement in the Patterson Science Center. Of course, the Career and Technical Education Plan continues to support the strategic plan that you approved several years ago, and we strive to fulfill the mission, which is to empower those students to be successful citizens, workers, and leaders in a global economy. And we feel we're doing very well in this endeavor within the school system. If you'd like to read the entire report, Kathy Jo's put you the web address, and you can go right on the state site and read everybody's if you would like to, because that's exactly where we had the entire part. So we shine right there among the rest of them. We're quite proud of their work. Have any questions? If I can answer them, my backup's here. Now, my request to you is that you approve the CTE plan for this coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Do I hear a motion that we approve the 2013-2014 Career and Technical Education Local Plan?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the 2013-14 CTE plan. A second motion.
Any questions?
I was going to say, I'd just like to comment that I think that that has always been a very strong area in our school system, and one that has had huge benefits for many, many of our students. And I think some of the young people that we recognized here tonight are evidence of that.
They are.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Burns. Next, we have Dr. Jeff Church, Assistant Superintendent for Auxiliary Services.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Stone, I have seven items tonight for your action. Exhibit nine, our bids, bids were received for HVAC replacement at Highbryton High School on April the 23rd. The lowest responsible bidder was, or is, William C. Reynolds at $334,342. I respectfully request acceptance of those bids.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the bids as presented for the HVAC replacement at Highbryton High School?
I move we approve the bids for the HVAC replacement at Highbryton High School as presented.
Second. Okay, any questions of Dr. Church? Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 10 is a lottery application to pay for the HVAC replacement at Highbryton High School, and if approved, this application will be placed on the county commissioner's agenda on the 20th. I respectfully request approval of the lottery application.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the lottery application for the HVAC replacement at Highbryton High School?
I move we accept the lottery application for HVAC replacement at Highbryton High School.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 11, in combination with the HVAC replacement, it's about time for the roof for Highbryton, so we're going to, while we're cutting the holes, while we're doing that project, we're going to go ahead and re-roof that section, the same section at the same time. Bids were received on Thursday, May 2nd, for re-roofing of Seawing. Lowest successful bidder is Bon-Tec at $80,677. I respectfully request that we accept those bids.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the bids for roof replacement at Highbryton High School as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the Highbryton High School bids for roof replacement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 12 is an ADM application for payment for the roof replacement at Seawing. If approved, that will be placed on the May 20th county commissioner's agenda as well. I respectfully request that you approve the ADM application.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the ADM application for roof replacement Seawing at Highbryton High School?
I move that we approve the ADM application for roof replacement at Highbryton High School as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Exhibit 13, bids were received for roof replacement at the bus garage on May the 1st, 2013. The lowest responsible bidder is Conover Construction, and that bid was $43,035. I respectfully request acceptance of those bids. This will be paid for out of capital funds.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the, do I hear a motion that we approve bids for roof replacement at the bus garage?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the bids for roof replacement at the bus garage as presented.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you. Exhibit 14 is not under your electronic copy. That was placed at your table. Bids were received for evening custodial contract cleaning services at West Caldwell High School on May the 3rd. The lowest, the only and lowest bidder was Watts Cleaning Service, and he came in at $24,750. And I respectfully request that we accept those. He currently, that company has currently received the bid last year at South Caldwell and does an exceptional job.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the bids for contract cleaning services at West Caldwell High School?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept... Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the contract bid for a cleaning contract for West Caldwell High School.
Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And finally, exhibit 15, are the rollover bids for milk in school cafeteria. The best news of that is, there will be no increase next, next school year. So I respectfully request that we approve the rollover bid for milk.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the rollover bid for milk in our school cafeterias?
I move we approve the bids for, for the rollover bid for milk for school cafeterias as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Good, we don't have an increase.
That's very good.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Summer projects are fixing to commence.
Sounds like you're spending a lot of money, Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Church. We have next, our Finance Director, Mrs. Carla Miller.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Stone, tonight, I have two budget amendments for your consideration. They are behind exhibit 16, or in exhibit 16. The first one is a budget amendment to the State Public, State Public School Fund. It's an increase of $76,445 for transportation funding, Indian gaming funds, that's a new allotment that we've never received before, substitute reimbursement for March, and technology interest for February, along with some purpose function transfers that the directors have requested. And budget amendment number 16 to the Capital Outlay Fund is an increase of $173,068, and it's to appropriate funding for two white activity buses. And I just wanted to say that the white activity buses are a separate fund. That funding comes from the accumulation of billing for activity bus usage over a number of years, until we accumulate enough to buy an activity bus. So that's a, that's appropriating fund balance, but it's a separate fund balance, just in the white bus activity fund. If you approve the two budget amendments tonight, our total budget for the year is $117,103,855, and I respectfully request that you approve these amendments.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget amendments to the State Public School Fund and the Capital Outlay Fund?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve budget amendments 15 and 16 as presented. Second.
Okay, any questions?
The two white buses, $123,300, those buses we only got.
They just came.
I saw them, they're nice.
You've probably driven one.
I was trying to figure out how we qualify for these Indian gaming funds. I thought all of those went to the reservations.
All school districts in the state received a portion of them, and they have to be spent in this school year for instructional services. We got $11,000, so we can't do a whole lot, but you can pay for teachers, or teacher assistants, or buy instructional supplies with them.
That's interesting.
It is, it's very interesting.
Maybe they need to gain more.
Yeah, go up to Cherokee and whatever you do.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Exhibit 17 contains our 2013-14 current expense and capital outlay budget request. And General Statute 115(c)(429) requires that the Board of Education submit the budget requests to the Board of County Commissioners. The Finance Committee has met and discussed the current expense and capital outlay budgets fairly extensively, and I would just like to point out that on our, in our current expense budget, we're asking for a 2% increase plus $100,000. That would be specifically for Patterson Science Center. So our request to the county is for $14,739,000. And if everything stays as is, our total current expense budget for next year would be $19,970,406. And on our 2013-14 capital outlay budget, our projected income from sales taxes, $1,710, And our total budget is $4,278,050. Now, this is just our request. Once the state budget is approved, I'll be coming back to you, hopefully, in August or September with a final budget. But this is our request to the county, and I respectfully request that you approve this tonight.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the local current expense and capital outlay 2013-2014 budget request?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the 2013-14 current expense budget request.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
Any questions? Anybody have any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
And just a note, Mr. Chairman, we have two of our county commissioners still with us, and will be coming to you. I think if you need a work session and you need for us to present, we'd be more than glad to, that request, but I know you all are working on your budget, so we look forward to conversations with you.
Okay, moving along with the agenda here, we had three of our members that were able to go to the national conference, and they're going to report on some of their clinics, or sessions that they attended, and general sessions and so forth. So we'll, we'll do that, and I'll start with Vice Chairman, Mr. Tim Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Pennell. Like Mr. Pennell said, three of us on the board had the opportunity to attend the national conference, along with Dr. Stone, myself, Dr. Hall, and Mr. Knight. And what we tried to do is, is kind of split up the tracks, and each person take a different track. And so my lot fell on technology, and so that's the track I followed. The first session I attended, I was entitled one-to-one, using the cloud to impact student learning. And it was from a, presentation was from a high school district in suburban Chicago, and they took that to the next level by issuing Google Chromebooks to all 3,500 students in their district this past fall. And the question they said that they were trying to wrestle with was this question right here. Should we consider students to have two separate lives? A relatively digitally unplugged life at school, and a digitally saturated life away from school? Or should we consider them to have one life that integrates their lives as students and digital citizens? And I know that not only as a board member, but also as a parent, that is so true, because as soon as my kids get home from school, one of the first things I want to do is get on some type of electronic media, whether it be a computer, or laptop, or a smartphone. And it isn't long before they're on some type of social media, or Instagram, or something like that. And even at such a young age, their lives are saturated with digital media. And so when you think about it, it really makes sense to not only have our kids immersed in that at home, but also at school. And so what this school district did is, they started a process about 10 years ago, where they continue to upgrade their technology, educate their staff. They moved to, and some of you will be familiar with this term, they moved to Google apps for educators, and not only for their faculty and staff, and then they provided Google apps for their students in August of 2011. I thought it was interesting, because one of the things that they shared was, one of the best conferences that they attended in regard to this was right here in North Carolina. They attended a conference in Mooresville, a summer conference, so some of you may be familiar with that too. And not only that, but some other school site visits. And so what they did was, they, after they had gotten all their information together, and visited these different sites, they started as a pilot program in their district, and then from that pilot program, it began and continued to add courses. And so I thought it was very interesting how they were able to implement that one-to-one. Maybe something we can look at at some point in time in the future. The second one, kind of piggybacked a little bit on that, but the reason I went to it is because of its proximity, and also because of its school size, district size. It was called From Fiber to Chromebook: Making One-to-One a Reality in a Rural School District. And this was actually presented by Rockingham County Schools here in North Carolina. Their enrollment's 14,000, which is very similar to ours, a very rural school district. And what they did is, they collaborated, went into collaboration with North Carolina DPI, and North Carolina State University, and the Golden Leaf Foundation, to create these 21st century classrooms, and to do this one-to-one laptop initiative. We're familiar with all of those organizations. And so what they were able to do was to provide a one-to-one laptop for all the high school students in their district. And they were asking themselves a similar question. They said, why are we doing this? Well, we are currently preparing students for jobs, and listen to this, I thought was interesting. We are currently preparing students for jobs that don't yet exist. I started thinking, you know, a kindergarten, I have a first grader and a fourth grader, you know, we're preparing them in the classroom for jobs that don't even exist yet, using technologies that haven't been invented to solve problems we don't even know are problems yet. And it shows how quickly things change in the, in the area of technology. What was the result of the one-on-one laptop initiative in their district? The graduation rate went through the roof, their EOC scores went up, teachers were excited, and most, most of all, the students were very engaged in that. Something else I thought was interesting, too, through this, they were able to create their own professional learning network amongst their staff and their educators, and allow them to collaborate, stay connected with each other, and to share resources. So I thought it was very interesting. One of the other ones I went to in regard to technology, I just want to share three of those. This one is called Smartphones and Smarter Business, and this is by a gentleman, you may have heard of him, Jim Spella. He's a certified Microsoft Office Specialist, an amazing individual. And what he asked especially, he says, when you sign up for this seminar, particular one, please bring your smartphone, please bring your iPad, bring all your electronics up, because we're going to show you how to use it, and how to use it even better. And so what he did was, he took several polls, and we were able to do just immediate polls while he was sitting there, based on the, the tools that we had before us. He then went on to share with us the top 100 apps that educators and those that work in business need to have for their smartphone and their iPads. And so I've shared those. In fact, board members, you should see those in your email, I also sent with to Dr. Stone. If anybody else wants those, I'll send it to you, let me know, or you can ask Dr. Stone, he can forward it to you. One of the interesting apps that he showed me, and I was familiar with it a little bit just from seeing it, is a little thing called a QR code. Does anybody know what the QR code is? Right. You go and you see the little codes on certain things, and especially the flyers you get in the mail each week, you know, scan this code in. Well, one of the things I did, I thought, I'm going to try this out, and it's a free service. And so I went to the website, the QR code website, while I was in the session, and I made a QR code for Caldwell County Schools. And I sent it to Dr. Stone, I think, he sent it on to Libby there. And what they will allow us to do is to place that code on any information that we have, so that anybody can scan it, and it'll take it directly to our website. The other neat thing about that, too, is that each of our schools that have their own school website can have their own QR code, too. That was just a little bit of a, of a technology thing that, that impressed me, and kind of brings us forward. But I'll be, I'll be more than happy just to share any of those apps with you, some of, some other great apps, not only for, for education, but also for, for business and for being smarter, especially as we, as a board, and as a staff, administration move forward, you know, with the iPad technology and so forth. It's very beneficial, so I'm excited. I'll be more than happy to share any of that with any of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Dr. Hall?
All right. I was so glad that Mr. Hawkins chose the technology, or he kind of twisted his arm to take it, because I still call him my mentor sometimes, because I can use a lot of mentoring when it comes to the technology piece, and he was just really getting a hold on it, and I was glad, because as you could tell from what he shared, as much he can share, and that, there was much going on in technology that he was able to bring back. Of the tracks, I chose professional and personal development, and there were some really, really interesting sessions in professional and personal development. Some of them came on rather sharply to us as well. I chose Mike Stover, two of his sessions, because he's nationally, internationally renowned as a coach, and a speaker, and an author, and I could see why attending his sessions, two of his that I attended, back-to-back, were first, Leadership Isn't for Cowards. And that title grabbed me, because I realized, yes, there are times, these are turbulent times, as he addressed it, that there are so many things that we have to deal with that become more and more unfamiliar to us, as Tim was even talking about the changes in technology. So many other things that we have to deal with in the world of schools, so many things have changed. And our ability to influence our followers, or the people with whom we work, is key in every step we take in creating significant results. And his first presentation made that so clear. And after saying leadership isn't for cowards, his next session was, Deal With It: How to Stay Cool Under Pressure. I thought, wow, he's ringing my bell, because we definitely get a lot of pressures. And he pointed out more there, how to stay calm and focused when you have to deal with circumstances that you don't like, or that you don't understand at all. Pointing out key was changes inevitable, and how you deal with the change can make you or break you, or make the system or break the system. He pointed out the fact that all of us have stressors, and we know that without a doubt, but he really worked with us on the idea that it's how you deal with your stress that makes the difference. You can deal with your stress, and experience worry, and anxiety, and even fear of the future, or you can use your stress to neutralize those things that might be considered a danger to cope with. He said, our job is to deal with it, change it, and influence it, not to avoid it. Another session I attended was, again, one that would shake you up a bit, Leadership Skills for Dealing with Difficult People. I don't know why they had so many titles like this, but they did. But in the whole session, Leadership for Dealing with Difficult People, you could even be talking about the ones of us in this room, administrators or the board, because we are different people. We come from different frames of reference. We come from different backgrounds. We have so many different listening, and learning, and performing styles, that we can get on each other's nerves. So what, what this session did was to divide us into four groups, as so many of you are familiar with how you're divided with the Myers-Briggs. And he did it in an antagonistic way, so that we really were feeling uncomfortable, because he had us saying ugly things about the other personality skills, or the other leadership skills, really to the point where we were in four different places in the room, with everybody getting jabs at them. And I thought, I don't know if I like this or not, because I was in the group that was considered totally different from how I see myself. I don't see myself as wimpy, and compromising so much, but there were all kinds of things thrown at us to make us realize that other people can see you very differently from how you see yourself. And the important thing is, that you look at each other's differences as being strengths for the body, for the entire group, and realizing that those differences can be used to make you a stronger board, a stronger team, a stronger school, or whatever. But I found that one to be definitely important. And some of the things that he pointed out, that we need to always bring to the table when we're working together, the importance of communication, the importance of emotions, of history, as we all have different histories, of structure, and of our values, and pull these together, so that all these factors that could be in conflict can be used for the greater good. Another one I attended made me feel really, really comfortable in that Caldwell County Schools cares about students. The name of this one was Overcoming the Odds: Lessons from the School with No Name. And there was a teacher that had 11 years' experience in there was a teacher that had 11 years' experience in a school that was very threatening to her, because again, you talk about environment and personality, she came into what she didn't call an alternate school, but it would be an alternate school in our environment, and she talked about how threatening it was for her to try to immerse herself in an environment that didn't fit who she was in the beginning, and how much she had to grow to make the school successful. But then, in no time, she found out that the most important thing that she could do was to demonstrate to the school community that she really cared about them, that she really loved the students, and wanted not to just know about how they performed in the classroom, but to get to know them as individuals inside out when it comes to schools, so that something we've said in this community, in our schools, over and over again, is how much you care about the students, and how much you show them and demonstrate that you care that makes the difference. If you're attending activities other than those that you just have to attend, or participating in things that you just have to, not just speaking to a student in school, but out of school, out of school or wherever, pulling their lives together in your relationships instead of just being the professional intellectual that doesn't just reach the students without caring. So there were many wonderful sessions that took place at the conference. I could go on and on, but I know we want to hear from Dwayne Knight, and I will pass to him, but thank you for the experience. It was great.
Very good. I'm going to speak on the general sessions, but one thing, I did go to a session, and in there, they were talking about BYOD, Bring Your Own Device, where they encourage students on certain days of the week, like math class or whatever, you can bring your laptops, iPads, or smartphones, and they'll use them in class. I thought that was pretty ingenious, too. Okay, best known for her performance in The Accidental Tourist, Thelma and Louise, and League of Her Own, Gina Davis was our guest speaker on the first day. She said that 17% of women hold positions of leadership and authority in key sectors in American society, and she said that 17% also holds true among female characters depicted in today's family-oriented movies and television shows. She wanted to be an advocate for gender, against gender stereotypes in the media and how it impacted children. She said she spent most of her adult life advocating equal rights for women and girls, and this led to her opening up the Gina Davis Institute on Gender Media, which has gathered a large body of research and shows how females are portrayed in movies and television. And she put those, her works, in front of writers, directors, and producers, and other entertainment industry. What she found out, that nothing has changed since 1940, she stated that since then, it's been the same. And also, a study of G-rated movies between 2006 and 2009, and I quote, says, "Not one female character was depicted as a leader in business, law profession, or medical science or politics." And what she suggests us as a school board could do is to examine our textbooks, to review how women are depicted, and that women should be shown to be engaged in science, just like the boys, and that women are taking up the rightful space in the history books. So that was Ms. Gina Davis on the first day. Second day, a gentleman who is a New York astrophysicist, author, television commentator, and conference keynote speaker, that was Neil Tyson. He was on the committee that demoted Pluto. And he says he has a cabinet full of hate mail, mostly from third graders, and his exact words was, "Get over it." So that's his claim to fame. Except for that, he did speak on STEM, you know, science, technology, engineering, and math, in the schools. He said there are some promising signs at STEM, including TV shows are out today, such as NCIS, CSI, Breaking Bad, and Free, and he also mentioned Big Bang Theory, and he says that more people than geeks got to be watching that. He was a guest on that, made a guest appearance as himself on that show at one time. Did his talk urging his audience to keep STEM in the classrooms, but also make sure arts is emphasized as well. His last quote was, "Our country is shrinking in relevance. Make sure we keep STEM subjects there, because that's the future of our economy."
Thank you. Thank you. Sounds like there was a lot of excellent information there. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is appointment of Colwell County, appointment to the Colwell County Board of Education. As you know, for some time, we have had six members since Mrs. Teresa Branch has taken the position as interim director of Exceptional Children. So the board is ready to move in the election of somebody to join us on the Board of Education. We had some excellent, absolutely outstanding people to choose from, so we're, it's a very difficult decision, you know, for the board to do that. And in the process, we are, the person is going to need four votes in order to be selected to the board. So, Dr. Stone, do you want to...
Yes, I'll conduct the election, since I can't vote. But again, we did have some excellent candidates, and I know it's a very difficult choice for the board. The process we will use, I will give you a ballot, which has the names of the candidates. If you will circle the ballot, sign your name, and then I will call on you, and you will verbally name the candidate.
Can I say something before we start? The task of porting students to Edinburgh is a difficult one, since Teresa's layup, and that's why we're taking so long, because we'll make sure we get the right person. We had applications from well-known, knowledgeable, and concerned citizens here in Colwell County, and each shows that genuine care for our students in Colwell County. I think each possesses the necessary qualities to be a successful board member, and I consider each of them a friend, but unfortunately, we only have one seat to fill.
I agree.
Okay, if you will, go ahead and mark.
Okay, when I call your name, if you will announce who you have voted for and pass your ballot forward to me. We'll start with you, Dwayne.
Anne Edwards.
Dr. Hall?
Joe Sims. Joe Sims.
Joe Sims.
Andy Anderson.
Tim?
Andy Anderson.
Joe Sims.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we do not have a majority, so that will require a second vote. That vote was three Joe Sims, two Andy Anderson, one Anne Edwards. I will pass out the second ballots. We'll do the same process at this time. And I have a bunch of ballots, so we can be here all night. We're prepared.
Joe Sims.
Joe Sims.
Joe Sims.
Joe Sims.
Joe Sims.
Joe Sims.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have six for Joe Sims. Congratulations, Mr. Sims.
Congratulations. That will be official at our June meeting, and we'll have the judge here to swear you in, but again, we had excellent, excellent choices, and we appreciate your interest in wanting to be a part of the Board of Education. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Do you have anything?
I do, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My contract, the pesky little thing inside my contract says that you evaluate me once a year. We usually do that in June, so I have, with, you're getting a folder, and it has the evaluation instrument itself, and a few comments that I put together in there that hopefully will guide you. The process you've used in the past, Mr. Chairman, is that the board members have about a month to review this, to comment, and then if you want to speak to it next month, as to how they're collected and tallied, so there's that pesky little thing in my contract.
Very good. So we will review this for a month, and then we'll probably report back maybe at our August meeting.
Yeah, that's generally the way you do it.
We'll do that, report back at our August meeting, so we'll let you know at our next meeting when we're going to need these back, and then I'll tabulate what we have, and we'll report at our August meeting. Anything else, Dr. Stone?
That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have three things, actually, on our meeting schedule here. First is our next scheduled board meeting here at the Education Center on June 10, 2013, and as you well know, it was not put into the announcements here, but on June 27, at 5:00, we're going to do our budget meeting. That should not take very long at all, but we need to do it at the very end of the month, and rather than do it on a Friday, we're going to do it on Thursday, 27. Okay? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I also meant to mention, too, that we will be, and the reason why we're not doing it on a Friday, we're operating on a four-day work week, starting the first week in June and going until the second week in August, four-day work week, the hours of 7:30 to 5:30 district-wide, and closed on Friday.
And the last meeting is, the Board of Education is looking forward to the meeting at Patterson School, the Patterson Science Center, and we're going to have a reception at 5:00, and our board meeting will be at 6:00 there on the 15th of July. Note that it is the 15th of July and not the 8th, so you'll keep those dates in mind. And we will see all of you next time. Thank you for being here. Did I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.